Good. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 1st, 2018 Hillsborough Township Planning Board meeting. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975 Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Ms. Forrest?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Hestag?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Here.
Commitment Delkor?
Here.
Commitment Sarachi?
Here.
Chairman LaPau.
Here. First order of business is the deposition and minutes, first one dated December 14th, 2017. Copy of that has been presented in your packet in front of you.
Eligible members, Mr. Chairman, are yourself, Mr. Sarachi, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Julian.
We have a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the December 14th, 2017 minutes.
Thank you very much. And second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. We will have a roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Commitment Sarachi?
Yes.
Chairman LaPau.
Yes. Moving down the line there, we have the January 11th, 2018 reorganization meeting minutes.
Mr. Sarachi, Mr. Delkor, Mr. Wagner, Vice Chairman Julian, Mr. Hestag, and Mr. Weinstein.
We have all a motion for approve on those.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, sir. And a second?
I'll second. Congratulations on being elected chairman.
Oh, thank you very much. But I don't get to vote. But, uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yep.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Commitment Delkor?
Yes.
And Commitment Sarachi?
Yes.
Thank you.
By the way, Mr. Chairman, the board considered also voting you in as secretary and vice chairman in your absence.
We considered that.
But restrained.
For some reason, it didn't happen. I don't know. A little kindness goes a long way. And the last minutes would be from the same date, the regular meeting dated January 11th, 2018.
Same group.
Same group.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Commitment Delkor?
Yes.
Commitment Sarachi?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. There are no dispositions of resolutions to go through, so the first, a little bit of some business to attend. We have appointments of the master plan subcommittee. Can I just make those appointments or do they have to be? Okay. So the appointments are going to be Committeeman Mayor now, or not mayor, not anymore, ex-mayor. So I'm used to saying that. Committeeman Sarachi, Committeeman Mr. Delkor. Rob Peason will be alternate, Vice Chairman Neil Julian, and myself.
Mr. Chairman, just a note on the subcommittee. We are required to file our reexamination, master plan reexamination report this year by October. Started putting together the basic information already, so the subcommittee will have some work to do this year to help us get through that.
So it's not just name only. We have to work this time?
Yes, this is, there's work to do.
We look forward to that. When will, you have some time to have a meeting. Should we do anything too soon?
As I pull together chapters and sections, we'll, we'll set something up. The committee together and, yeah, we can all meet at noon, I'm sure.
Have lunch. Sure. All right. Thank you. So next planning board business is the Hillsborough Estates Home and Association, LLC, File 17 PB09 MS, filing for an extension through March 31 of 18. That's in your packet there.
For the board's quick edification, this was an application the board approved in the fall of last year, subject to updated engineering and related documents which have not yet been completed, and that is why applicant's counsel has asked for the extinction.
So make a motion to approve that or do we?
Yeah, we need a motion.
We have a motion to approve the extension filed 2313, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
We have a second and a roll call, please.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Commitment Delkor?
Yes.
Commitment Sarachi?
Yes.
Chairman LaPau.
Yes. All right. So we're, no special committee reports. Is there any business from the floor tonight that is not on tonight's agenda that would want to come before our board? Seeing none. There are no consideration of ordinances tonight, so we will go to our first order of public hearing order of business. It would be Hillsborough Gardens Associates LLC, the clubhouse, 17 PB14 MSP, Block 15316, Lot 1. Farm Road, seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval, updated if variances to construct an approximately 2,900 square foot building and sidewalk and access driveway consisting of approximately 1,050 square feet to be used for the Hillsborough Gardens community to contain a recreation component and laundry facility, a rental office for the property located in the PD Planned Development Zoning District, EC review of dated 12/18/17. Counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your professional staff, and members of the public. My name is Peter Klausert. I'm an attorney with the firm Heilbronn-Pape, and I have the pleasure of representing Hillsborough Gardens Associates LLC this evening. As you identified, Mr. Chairman, this is an application for preliminary and final site plan approval for the existing residential community. I understand it's been in existence since sometime in the 70s, and the purpose is to create a clubhouse, a common area where the laundry facilities can be located, the rental office, the, some exercise equipment for the residents to use, and it is a resident-only proposed clubhouse. But it requires a site plan approval. We have not identified any variance relief associated with the application. I have not seen any variance relief identified in your professional reports. The presentation this evening, Mr. Chairman, is through four witnesses. Fred Mosesman, he's the project manager and a representative of the applicant. He could just put on the record officially the testimony as to what it is that we're doing here and answer any questions you might have. And we have Mike Pucci, who's the site engineer, to describe the location of the improvements and the improvements themselves. We also have Steve Raddasti here, who's responsible for the design of the building. He's the applicant's architect, so he'll be able to take you through the elevations and the interior structure. And then finally, we lost, as a result of compliance with ADA requirements and the restriping of the parking lots comply with that, we lose one parking space in this area. So we had Dolan and Dean prepare a brief analysis of the parking to ensure that same is adequate, and Gary Dean is here this evening to share that with you. And all of those witnesses, we hope, are in response to the questions raised by your professionals' reports.
Okay. Do you want to call your first witness?
Sure. Fred, can you come up and join me? You can.
Raise your right hand, I swear you're in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you, stay fully expelled. Speak into the microphone, sorry, the other one. Fred Mosesman, M-O-S-E-S-M-A-N.
I don't think that's on. Mosesman, M-O-S-E-S-M-A-N. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mosesman.
Thank you, Fred. If you could just share with the board briefly what your relationship is to the applicant?
I represent the owner.
Microphone very close, please, because it's very touchy. Thank you. It's your rock star moment.
I'm not a singer, sorry.
That's it. Your rock star moment.
I am a project manager and representative of the owner for Hillsborough Gardens community.
Okay.
If you could just describe what the proposal is, why are we doing this?
We're looking to eliminate six laundry rooms that are non-handicap accessible. There are the basements of the buildings spread throughout the communities. Want to build a facility that is handicap accessible, laundry room, exercise room, a small lobby for our residents, and an office for the rental agent.
And about how many of the laundry machines are going to be in the facility?
That will be designed by a professional laundry management company. We're assuming that they're going to be probably around 12 washes and 12 dryers, but we'll leave that up to our contractor.
In order to determine what will satisfy the needs of the site?
Yes. They've already looked at the size of the room and gave us some criteria, so we size it appropriately.
The facility is going to be for the residents only, correct?
That's correct.
It's not open to the public?
No, it's not.
And the areas where the laundry machines now are being removed from the basements, those will just stay as vacant space? You're not proposing any additional residences there?
That's correct.
I have no further questions for Mr. Mosesman. He's available to the board for questions. Our next witness is the engineer.
Anything from you? You're good? I just, I have the landscape plan that was provided, but I don't know, is this a single-story facility?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I assumed it was, but I couldn't tell from the plan. Okay. And is it a locked with a key code? How would, or key, how would the residents get into this facility?
We plan on having a key fob given to our residents to use during certain hours, early in the morning to late at night. It'll be video security.
So it'll be limited access during certain hours? So it won't be a 24-hour facility?
Correct. It won't be 24 hours.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just a, the current facilities that you have in the buildings that this will be replacing will be used for what?
It'll just be vacant space.
Okay, so you won't have any laundry?
No, we're going to close, close them all up.
Have a microphone.
There you go.
Thank you.
David?
Actually, Mr. Wagner just stole my question, but, so it's understood, though, that any reuse or repurposing of that vacant space may require you to come back to this board and/or get a variance, depending on what you do with that space?
That's understood, yes. How many?
Certainly. So how many, you said you're going to put 12 washers, 12 dryers in the new building. How many are you, how many did you have now on site?
There's 17 of each, but there's an efficiency when you put them all in one location.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
You mentioned that's going to be, I guess, disability, handicapped accessible?
The entire building.
But it's in one location, so is that, and that's going to replace the others that are already within each individual building?
We have six of them spread throughout the community, not in each individual unit, and they're non-handicap accessible there. There's approximately 14 steps to go down into the basement.
Okay, so it's benefiting that way, but it might be a longer walk for some to get to the new building?
It could be.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Fred.
A motion to open public?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have any questions for Mr. Mosesman? Sorry, I pronounced it wrong.
Mosesman.
Mosesman, on his testimony given? Okay. Next.
Thank you very much.
Was there somebody back there?
Yeah.
All right, come on up. I'm sorry. He didn't raise his hand fast enough. My bad. So just come up to the microphone in the front and just state your name, please, first, and spell your last for Lucille, and then your address.
My name is Paul Wargo.
In the microphone, please.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Paul Wargo, W-A-R-G-O. I live at 26-4 Farm Road.
Okay.
And I got the letter, so I'm curious, more so than anything, trying to find out exactly, from what I understand, I did go to the tax people to look at the map.
Okay.
But I'm still not sure exactly where they're planning on doing this. If it doesn't affect me, I'll be leaving, but I think it affects me.
You want to know where the facility is going to be?
Yeah, I would like to know.
So we have a rendition, I believe, that someone's going to testify and show it. Some sort, you want to show them?
Is that in there?
Yep.
May I look at it?
Well, let, well, let's bring it to testimony. Has that been brought into evidence? Why don't we, why don't we mark that first?
Sir, I think they're going to talk about that in just a sec, so if you have a question about the site map.
Yeah, I'd like to know their location.
Could it maybe be a different witness that will talk about it than?
Yes. So why, if you, have a seat, we might answer that question for you in about two minutes. Is there anything else on the testimony that he gave, though, other than that?
Well, I have no problem with that.
All right. Then give us a minute, and then maybe we'll have your answer question.
Okay.
That's okay.
No, no, you're fine.
So we're going to put that exhibit into, as A1, I would imagine? And?
Well, I'm going to mark them in a different order.
Oh, you're going to?
Different order for a different reason, but it'll all be done in a matter of a few minutes.
All right, so why don't we bring up your next witness then?
Thank you, Fred. My next witness, Mr. Chairman, is Mike Pucci. He's a design engineer, so we'll start with getting him sworn in. I'll get his qualifications on the record.
Perfect.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you, stay fully spelled in your last name. Michael Pucci, P-U-C-C-I.
Mike, if you could just share with the board your licensing and your credentials?
I'm a licensed professional engineer and professional planner in New Jersey, licensed for about 30 years or so.
A little closer.
I'm a managing partner of Chester Partnership, or Chester Plusus Sazaski Partnership, where I've been employed for about 38 years. I've been a partner for about 28 years, and I've designed subdivisions and site plans throughout the state, and I've appeared before this board, but not in the last 15 or 20 years or so.
Well, welcome back. We'll take your, your credentials.
So I think it's a good time, Mike, for maybe you to orient the board as to where the property is and where the proposed improvements are.
I see some stickers on your deck, so I'll.
What do you want to name this one?
A1 would be?
That's okay.
The title survey, which was used, prepared by Van Cleef Associates. That will be?
Okay.
The basis for showing where we are in the overall complex. The property itself, Hillsborough Gardens, is about three miles north of here. It's about a half mile west of 206, just below Triangle Road, about 500 feet or so south of Triangle Road. It's along Farm Road.
Yeah, and go sit right in the corner if you'd like. We'll take a.
A little bit louder, too, Mike, if you could for us.
So 206 runs north and south out here, about a half mile away, and Triangle Road will come down to here. Farm Road brings us into the site. The site's about 16.4 acres, known as Hillsborough Gardens. You can see there are a number of buildings on the site, about 260 units, and it's been around, as Peter said, since the 70s. In a big overall sense like this, within the existing building, there are parking lots around existing buildings, and there's a green space right in this location here where we propose our new recreation building. Dead flat lawn, nothing is in here at all.
Before you take that down, Mr. Wargo, do you know where he's talking about?
No, I could, could I?
Could you put that back up, please?
It's too far.
Could you point out Cardinal, Cardinal Way?
Hold, I can't see.
And Farm Road?
Okay. Triangle Road comes from 206 down to here. Turn in Farm Road. This is farm, right? Correct. Cardinal Lane is here. Right. If you come around Farm Road here and come into this parking lot around here, in the back of this parking lot, there's a little angle here, the big high tension lines that go over the top. Okay. This is the location where the building is. So you have this building in front of you and a parking lot. This one right here, that end right there is where. You're bringing me to this lot right here in front of those roads? And the grass between the end of that building and the end of this building, yes. So there's no egress from 206 in? Nothing whatsoever. No new pavement whatsoever? Everyone's going to be within there? That's correct. Thank you so much. Me, too. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Man of his words, I like that.
Wish it was that easy all the time. All right, we'll continue. Now, we have a new exhibit up there. Do you want to mark that while you're up there, or you want to wait until?
I now have A2. This is known as?
An overall set.
Thank you. This is actually the third sheet of the plan set that was submitted for the project, and this shows the overall boundary of the lot, as I said, about 16.4 acres. And within that lot, we have obtained detailed topographic and survey information for the area where we are doing this proposed building. This was done because the title survey was blank. It's just horizontal locations, nothing vertical, so we met with your engineer and your planner months ago and determined that it was appropriate to get enough detailed information to be able to accurately design this improvement for the affected area. Within that same plan set, the fourth sheet is known as the site and grading plan. And this now, which I'll.
You can put it side by side, so we can look at both. There you go.
This will be A3. Thank you.
Bill's on it.
This is an enlarged version of the fourth plan in the set. However, this plan also has on it something beyond what is shown in the plan set, and I will explain that in a moment. This enlarged version shows the end of here, Building 5, as I just described, to the resident who lives across the street, and the end of Building 4 here. In this area right now, there is an existing sidewalk extension that runs in front of, that is, to the south of Building 4, and runs out to the sidewalk that runs along the parking lot. That little piece of sidewalk right here will come out, and this vacant lawn here, which is nothing but lawn, there's no vegetation other than grass, no trees, no shrubs, anything, will be replaced by our proposed building of approximately 2,900 square feet. There will be a witness after me to describe the building to you, but this is the footprint of the building. In conjunction with putting the footprint here, we are doing two other site improvements. At the end of this parking lot, that is, to the north of or in front of Building 4, we're going to put in an access drive to the back corner of the building for storage of materials that are used on the site, maintenance purposes. In the front, we're going to extend the existing sidewalk but rip it out and replace it to make it handicap accessible compliant. At the same time, we're going to take the existing parking lot that's in the front and restripe it. The elevations are fine for the grades. The slopes are not in excess of what handicap accessibility would require, but having a curb in front of it is a problem. So we'll rip out the curb and replace the sidewalk and the curb in the front of the building to make sure that both doorways into the building are handicap compliant. As to utility infrastructure for this, there's an existing sanitary line that kind of goes right there, right underneath the new building. So we have discussed this with your MUA and proposed to just reroute the sanitary sewer around the building. There's adequate slope on the pipe to do so. There is, in fact, no easement over the existing pipe, which was a comment addressed in your engineer's letter. However, if it's determined that one is necessary, we will provide one for the relocated pipe. We have a will-serv letter from your MUA indicating that they can provide adequate capacity, but they will not commit to it until some time to make a formal application. We also have a will-serv letter from New Jersey American Water saying that they will provide water to us. There is an existing water line out here in Farm Road, and we propose to actually trench in the parking lot all the way out to Farm Road to get water service to the building. There is water service to the existing buildings now, but we can't assume that it's adequate to handle expanded use for this building, so we're bringing a brand-new line into this new building. As to stormwater, currently, it's just a vacant lawn, and there's a high point in the parking lot about in this location at the western, or I guess northern edge of Building 5. The parking lot either drains to the south, back towards Farm Road, or to the north, towards the end, and into the easement where the high tension wires are, and there's a storm drainage pipe within the high tension wires that eventually drains off to the south. So half of the site currently just drains to the south over lawn, over lawn, or over land on lawn, and the other half drains to the north over land on lawn. Our proposed building is only 2,900 square feet. Even with the improvements of the sidewalk and the access drive, we are 3,950 square feet, just under 4,000, just under a tenth of an acre. The project is not a major project. It does not even qualify to be governed by the Stormwater Management Regulations of the state. We are, in fact, exempt, and we had submitted to the Delaware Araton Canal Commission for their jurisdictional determination. They determined that we are also exempt. The rules do not apply. We propose to handle stormwater simply by having the roof leaders discharge onto the surface and go in the general direction of the flow where it currently goes today. We also have submitted the application to the county planning board.
Mr. Pucci, can you keep the mic a little higher?
Sorry.
Thank you.
We have also submitted this application to the county planning board, and they have approved the project since there is no impact to any county facilities. Now, as I said, this is the site and grading plan, Sheet 4 of the set, with one other change. We did appear before the environmental commission back in December, and the environmental commission asked for some landscaping around the building. The engineers of your letter also asked for some landscaping around the building and some shade trees. So we have prepared a draft landscaping plan, submitted it to the environmental commission for their review and opinion concurrence. At the same time, we submitted it to this board so that people here could look at it and give us an opinion, is this adequate, or is there something else you'd like us to do? This plan represents not only the site plan and grading plan from the officially filed plan set, but also includes that proposed landscaping. The only vegetation, only tree in the area is this one existing tree between Buildings 4 and 5. So we are proposing two evergreen and two deciduous ornamental trees, as well as foundation landscaping.
Okay.
Mike, in the, the engineer's report from me, they had asked if you could provide some additional spot grades, just to confirm the stormwater management testimony that you just gave, and that's not an issue, that's something you could do.
Not at all, we'll take care of it.
And then if you could just talk about, we're not affecting, there's no light poles or anything like that that we're moving or interfering with and?
That is true.
Thanks.
The existing parking lot, or all of the parking lots, there are no light poles out here. All the lighting of the existing lot is done by wall packs on the units up at the top of the eaves of the second floor. There is one on the corner of the north end of Building 6 that aims out towards the area of the parking lot where we're working. There's one on the north face of Building 4 that aims and lights that parking lot in front. It does not aim towards where our building is. And there is one on the end of Building 5 where the fire was that also aims basically to the west or so, lighting that parking lot. So where we are placing our new building is not in line with any of the existing lights and where they are casting their illumination. Will not be impacting the existing lights, but we are not proposing to install any new lights, any light poles out here, since there are none on the site.
You're not going to provide any lighting on the front of the building, just to, because you are going to be...
Decorative lighting on the face of the building will be addressed by the project architect.
Okay. Any, anything else?
I have no further questions for Mr. Pucci. I think he covered everything.
All right, Mr. Maskey.
Yeah, a question about pedestrian access from the vicinity of Building Four and the parking lot adjacent to it. You're taking out the sidewalk that obviously would be under the building, so...
Correct.
If walk us from the parking lot next to Building Four to the front door of this building, which is on the opposite side, I take it?
Correct. They would actually have to run on the existing sidewalk system.
Have to go all around.
That is correct.
What's to prevent them from taking the shortcut, crossing over the maintenance driveway just straight to the front door?
Trying to put the two...
And is it worth putting, providing some sort of sidewalk on that side?
Well, I tried to put the trees there to exactly prohibit that, but if the board wishes, we could change, move these a little apart and add some sidewalk here.
Yeah, my sense is I certainly want the trees and the bushes, but...
Well, separate them a little bit and put a sidewalk between.
I'm guessing people are going to take that shortcut. If they're carrying laundry or whatever, they're not going to go all the way around the building to get to the front. With that in mind, that driveway, it accesses the maintenance portion of this building, and it looks like there's a garage bay door on that side?
That's correct.
How much traffic, how much truck is going to... Question has to do with if we, if you create that shortcut sidewalk, is there a safety issue with crossing over that driveway?
Fair question that I am not empowered to answer. I would leave that to our client as to what he intends to actually do with that room, and therefore tell you how often it might be, actually, the door might open.
Can we bring him up so we can settle the pedestrian access?
Sure. Do you want me to bring him up right now?
Bring him up. While we're at it, he's sworn in, so he can just answer the question.
Do you understand the question?
Yes. The, probably just two trucks a week, mainly for appliances, things that would be difficult to bring down the steps into a basement.
So it's not deliveries, ground maintenance, it's primarily to active maintenance on the machines, is there?
It's primarily going to be used for those items that we don't want to drag downstairs into a basement.
Oh, okay, for storage?
Storage, that's it.
I see.
We have a maintenance facility in the basement of one of the other buildings.
I take it they back in, or...
It's right off the parking lot. The other one is, the existing one is right off the parking lot. On this one, if we have appliance deliveries, that's where it will go into this garage.
Okay. But you're talking about two trips a week, is what you're saying?
Yeah, not more than that. We don't get appliances that often.
Yeah. Well, I'll leave that to the board's discretion if you want them to put another sidewalk connection. You know, the old rule of designing sidewalks on a campus, you don't put the sidewalks in, you let, find out where the dirt paths are, and then you put the sidewalks in.
That's right, shortcuts are.
We'd probably want to avoid that here. Bill, do you have any issues with putting a sidewalk in there?
No, it's so infrequent trips that...
They could adequately mark the driveway, too, with the pedestrian markings, and then, but you still, you'd have to relocate that landscaping on that side. Maybe move it out a little bit, or...
Yeah, a couple of feet out to allow for sidewalk right against the building.
I'd like to just add one more thing. We've, this is about the fourth year of a five-year capital plan. We've replaced roofs, windows, porches, siding, landscaping throughout the community. Anywhere we think we needed sidewalks, we added sidewalks. And this is not only in this community, it's other communities as well. You know, if you want a sidewalk, we'll put it there, but believe us that if we see a path there, one out by the tenants, we'll put a sidewalk there.
Yeah, well, we could sort of be proactive and put the sidewalk in, if we know they're going to walk. I'm guessing people will take the shortcut. If they have two bags of laundry under their arms, they're not going to go all the way around the building to get to the front door.
Whatever you wish.
That's whatever the board wishes.
And there is no access whatsoever on the back side, right?
The backside of this building?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay.
The only thing, we could put a little sidewalk on the right side instead of going across the road, because that entrance road is kind of right towards the right side of that. You know, as just a secondary access sidewalk, if you wanted to.
So you're suggesting, instead of running it adjacent to the north wall, running it adjacent to the south wall?
Exactly. This way you don't have the crossing issue, and it's actually closer to the T, but then you'd have another sidewalk only a few hundred yards later, but...
You do have one that's located about 15 feet or so south of the building.
Is that the scale, is only another 15 feet?
It's 20 scale, so at one inch is about 20 feet.
20 feet.
And I would not put the sidewalk up against the building or keep it away just a little bit for...
So really, okay, and be too close.
15 feet away.
All right. Any questions from the desk? Go ahead.
Yeah, we just wanted to clarify something. When we were at the Environmental Commission, we understood that there was no limit on the impervious coverage, because it's a PD zone, but we just didn't understand, is the entire 16.4 acres, is it subject to any impervious coverage, or, like, how does that work? We understand we're losing 4,000 square feet of impervious coverage, but is that, is there a limit to the whole site, and how much impervious coverage do you have for the whole site?
There's no restriction in your ordinance that limits impervious coverage or building coverage in the PD zone.
Right.
However, the Environmental Commission did ask that we calculate what the existing impervious coverage is for the entire site. So we took the title survey and actually had someone calculate all of the existing impervious surface on the site within the confines of the boundary, the 16.4 acres. We came up with about 380,000 square feet of impervious surface. So when we added our 3,950 to that existing 380,000 square feet of impervious, we increased the impervious coverage of the lot by about a half a percent. However, there's no limitation on what that number could be, whether it's 60%, 80%, or 100%. So we increased it from 55.17 to 55.7?
53.16 to 53.71.
Thank you. Trying to do it from memory. We increased it by about a half a percent, but there is no threshold that says you cannot increase it above a certain number.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up to the question about access. There's only access from the front of the building. Is there any safety concern with not having a different access? I'm not sure how all the appliances are going to be lined up inside and...
There are two access doors on the front. There's also an egress door on the south wall, the right as you look at it now, and the architect will describe the building, the layout of the rooms within it, and the doorways.
Okay. And it would certainly be built to whatever your fire code, and actually, I believe we have a report from your Fire Bureau that they had no issue with the, with the application.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Bill, you good? Anybody from the public for this testimony? Seeing none. Okay, next witness.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mike. Get up, Steve. I'm going to bring up Steve Radosti now. He's the applicant's architect. May I ask, start with maybe having Steve sworn again, too, and we'll get his credentials on the record and cut him loose.
Mr. Tell us your license, if you'd like to put the street civil guide.
I do.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us know your last name.
Stephen Radosti, R-A-D-O-S-T-I. If you could share with the board your licensing and your credentials, Steve?
I'm a licensed professional architect in the state of New Jersey.
Mic from a little higher, please. It's for the recording, more than what, anything else? Okay.
I'm a licensed professional architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since 1996. I'm a partner at Perez and Radosti Architects, located in Cranbury, New Jersey. I've designed hundreds to possibly 1,000 buildings throughout the state of New Jersey. I testified in front of dozens of boards in New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Radosti, we'll take your qualifications.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you could, Steve, I think maybe start by marking your exhibit, and then take the board around the building that you designed.
What, do you want to mark this as?
We're at A4, I believe?
Okay, A4 it is.
We got nice little stickers here.
We have a sticker. Thank you very much.
Okay, the drawing is Exhibit A4. It is Sheet CS2, Proposed Floor Plan and Exterior Elevations, and this is a colorized version of what was previously submitted with a few small changes. The date on this is January 30th, 2018. So the building that we're proposing is a one-story clubhouse building, 2,930 square feet. The building would, would be matching the materials, colors, and finishes of the existing buildings. Building has a brick water table course, followed by white-colored, double-hung windows that would match, coordinate with the buildings, existing buildings. We'd also have a red, red to burgundy color trim at the front door, at the two front doors, and we'd have accessories on the building that would also use that red color, such as some standing seam metal roofs to accent portions of the roof, as well as some shutters throughout the sides of the building. We also have a tan to cream colored horizontal siding to match the existing siding on the existing buildings. And to accentuate the gables on the building, we have a faux cedar shake with an off-white color. Then we have various white to off-white color trim throughout the building. The main entrance of the facility would be located here, and you go into a foyer that there was a dormer above that have a window that would shine, would have a skylight that shines down into the foyer area. There would be, on the right-hand side, there would be two leasing offices. And then as you go straight through, there would be a multipurpose room with a kitchenette for the use by the residents. There would also be some public restrooms, two restrooms here, as well as associated utility spaces, like a janitor's closet and some other closets. On the other side of the facility, there'd be a separate entrance that would go into the laundry room. And the laundry room would have commercial washes and dryers, the quantity that we still haven't determined, but it would be approximately what Mr. Mosesman said. Also through that same doorway, you can go to the exercise room, and this would be an added amenity, added amenity for the residents of the facility. These dash lines indicate some interesting ceiling treatments, some vaulted ceilings, taking some use of the high roof area that we have on the building. On the side of the building, we'd also have the overhead door with the maintenance area, which would also be some use for some storage. And off of the laundry room, we have a separate toilet facility here also to be used by the residents. We'd be following the same materials and finishes throughout all four sides of the building. The water table would follow around, and the same look and colors and materials would also follow around. As we, oh, one of the, one of the things, I guess we made a couple of small changes from what was originally submitted to what you're looking at here. We did add, we did add some shutters, because we wanted a little more color on the sides of the building, so we added some matching shutters around the building. And we added a small sign by the front entrance here. It's two square feet, and it's a non-internally illuminated metal sign that would say leasing office, so they could locate where the leasing office would be. I guess it was touched on earlier about lighting on the building. We would have some decorative wall sconces throughout the façades of the building. They would be LED, and they would be low wattage, and the intent would to give it a residential look, almost like you would have on a house.
If you could just, just describe the, we have the two front entrances, and there was a board member that had asked a question about, you know, other egress doors.
Yes, so, so the building would meet the, meet the International Building Code, New Jersey Edition 2015, which is the current code in the state of New Jersey. We have egress doors in the front, and we have a second means of egress off to the side, and they're adequate distance apart. And then we also have the laundry room with exit here. There would actually also, out of the maintenance room, there would also be another door here. So there would actually be four, four separate singular double doors throughout the building in addition to the overhead door.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no further questions for Steve.
So those other egress doors, those were just for mercy exits, only they're not for main entrance? The main entrance is in the front, correct?
That is correct. This is for, this because, because of the space required, it's two means of egress.
All right. Just want to make sure, so other than the front entrances, all the other doors would be emergency only?
Yes, this would be emergency only. This door here would be entrance to the maintenance area, which would only be for employees.
Mr. White, you think the lighting is adequate for the front, for something that they're, for security reasons?
I don't know what's there now. I don't know what to propose, because we have no lighting levels. So I think the board should be asking for some lighting levels.
That's what I'm...
This is built in the 70s. Your ordinance was different back then. At least in the area, the parking lot, surrounding that area, it should be lit, so that we're safe and in accordance with our ordinance.
So we would need to have something provided to us?
It could be, I mean, as a condition.
As a condition.
If the board wanted to, then we'd have to meet Bill's specifications.
If I could, if you'd like, I can address that with Mr. Pucci. We, we might have an answer for you, as to what we could do, what we could provide, and if you'd like to hear that.
Okay, well, you can...
A related question, how late will the building be open?
What was the question?
How late will the building, the hours? Mr. Pucci.
We haven't determined the exact hour, but it'll probably be somewhere in 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock in the evening.
Okay, I was just asking yet, in lieu of, in light of, in light of the lighting question. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for, okay, any questions from the public? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. Gary Dean, D-E-A-N.
I know you've been here before. We'll accept your qualifications.
Thank you very much.
We have, we have one question that was raised in the report with regard to the parking, and I wonder if you could just take us through the analysis that your company conducted.
We did. Obviously, this proposal is simply displacing the function that the existing basement laundry room serve and just now concentrating it in one location. And I think it was in one of the staff reports, the question was raised regarding, might that have an impact on parking for those residents that don't elect to carry and walk to the building, but may in fact drive? So for this application, we took several samples of parking, six different occasions, looking at both weekends on Saturdays and then weeknights. And we focused on the parking fields, I'll say, north of Building Four, and I'm pointing to A3. Building Four is the east-west building, and then the parking lot is to the north. But looking at that parking field, and then also the parking field, Building Five is sort of in the middle part of the exhibit, on the northerly or westerly end of that. And we thought that that would be a reasonable place for residents to park if they elected to drive. And looking at all those six different samples, the time that we found the least amount of parking, there were still 27 spaces available. And as you've heard from Mr. Mosesman, there's only 24 appliances in the building, so literally if one person was using only one dryer, and we added all those up, we'd need 24 parking spaces, meaning no one walked, and we have 27. So we've concluded that it shouldn't displace any residents who don't want to use the building, and that there will be sufficient parking even during, you know, off-peak times, not when people would be doing laundry. And that was the only area I was asked to address for this application.
Okay.
Thank you. No further questions.
Anybody?
Thank you.
David?
Just one question. In your report, you noted there were 11 spaces in the western portion of the parking lot in Building Number Five that were occupied by construction equipment. I don't know if you can answer, do you know if they were just on a job, or are they permanently stored there?
No, it was, it was temporary equipment, and in fact, depending on the day we were out there, they moved. Contractors were setting up sawhorses and plywood and making various renovations, so they were...
So they would otherwise be available?
Otherwise be available all the time.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I would think that you're going to get people working out different times than you're going to have them doing laundry, but, I mean, that's just me, I don't know. Does that make sense, or?
It could, right. So there'll be multiple uses of the building, correct?
Could work out why you're doing laundry, yeah. Kill time while you're doing laundry.
You're there.
I'm sorry, and if you mentioned it, I apologize, but will there actually be handicap parking right there?
That, we do lose one parking space, because the building will be accessible, and that's really what's driving the entire project. I'm pointing again, but on the northern portion of the building, there's a row of parking spaces, and three will be converted into two handicap spaces for the building. So there is a net loss of one parking space.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Thank you. If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring Mr. Pucci up again to talk about lighting a little bit, and...
Sure.
What he's figured out.
As I said before, there are no lights on any poles in front of the building, and so we cannot, well, there are also no details known about the existing fixtures that are on the existing buildings, which I said currently illuminate the lots. So what I would suggest is, when the, if you're willing to accept a condition of approval, that once the building is constructed, and the wall sconces that Mr. Radosti testified to are actually in place and operational, if they provide adequate light for the proposed sidewalk system to the satisfaction of your professionals, then the question is self-answered. And if at that time the lighting is not adequate, then we could be required, as a condition of approval, to provide additional lighting to increase the lighting along the sidewalk in front of the building to a standard typically would be about a half a foot candle. Perhaps you might want to go a little brighter than that, but it depends on whether you want it to be residential, soft feel, or much more bright, commercial feel. Is that something that would be acceptable to your professionals?
I, you know, I was just trying to think to save the, especially since you're building a new site, to not have to redo it and rip sidewalks or whatever, and just install it once.
Well, we wouldn't rip sidewalks.
Well, I mean, for pulling electric or whatever, I mean, it's, to plan versus, I mean, I guess if you provide the type of lighting that you were considering, there should be some kind of foot candle rating on that fixture, correct?
Correct.
So if you have a fixture in mind, you would provide it to Mr. White and see if it at least meets that standard in itself.
Okay.
My main concern's the parking area, more than anything.
Well, I think that's something that we can, we can work with and provide in the details of what we're proposing, and work with your professionals to make sure we get the lighting where they want it.
Especially if you have handicap people there, it just needs a little more lighting involved, in my opinion, anyway.
Giving you proposed light levels is a simple matter, as you noted, and as we as engineers know, catalog cuts and lighting distribution, crow patterns, and we can provide isolus lines and point-point distribution.
Okay.
Existing is not so easy, because we don't know what was put up and how the light loss factors and the opacity of the glass has degraded over time. If that's an issue, there's a different approach, but if the issue is concerned with how we are providing adequate lighting for the parking in front of our building and the handicap accessibility, then we can address with the architect what fixtures have been chosen, make sure they give adequate light to the satisfaction of your board, of your professionals.
I think that's what we're looking for, right, Mr. White?
Thank you.
All right. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further witnesses. That was your applicant's direct presentation with regard to what is a pretty straightforward application to provide this, you know, communal building for the residents that are there, and to provide, you know, a safer and more accessible access to the laundry facilities. All of our professional... All of our professionals remain available for questions from you and the public, but we're, we're asking that the board act favorably on the application.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I just want to quit.
Eric?
Is there an affordable housing obligation that's generated?
No, because there's no residential being created here.
Okay. Even business? Because I'm assuming it's the laundry, I assume it's, it's...
Because of the use of the building, which is non-residential, though it is in a residential community, we don't believe it generates an affordable housing obligation.
Okay.
Okay.
Unless, as the applicant's witness indicated, they plan on using the, to be emptied space for something other than for residential use, then they would have to come back, A, to get an approval, and B, there would be an affordable housing component at that time.
Okay. Any other?
Just one more thing, will the clubhouse, when it's closed, will it be locked, the doors be locked and unlocked every morning and every night?
Yeah, I think that's the plan.
Yeah, sorry, I just thought about it.
Key fob.
Key fobs will be a time lock.
Okay, thank you.
Will they be professional staff kind of manning the building, making sure it's all good, or how would that operate?
There's a leasing agent, correct, that's in the building? That's, that's who, the person that's there all the time, and then the maintenance persons that are there.
Okay. I just have one other question, that as far as the use of the building, you had said you have a, you know, like, a kitchenette in the back of the one room. Is that if someone wants to rent it out for a small function or a party or something, is that reason the kitchenette's in that building?
I don't know if that was the intent, is that the intent? No, the intent is, it's, the person in the leasing office, maybe you described the intent. I asked that question this morning.
Okay.
Just in case it came up.
The kitchenette's only going to have a microwave to heat up coffee, a small refrigerator for bottled water, and a sink.
So it's, no major appliances, just?
No major appliances, and no intention of renting it out for parties.
Okay. Thank you. I have nothing else, anyone else? Okay. Any other questions from the public on what was just said? Okay, none? Motion to close, public?
Same.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So we're looking for a motion to approve or deny for Hillsborough Gardens Associate L C Clubhouse, seventeen PB, fourteen MSP, Block One Fifty-three, sixteen Lot One, on the preliminary major site plan approval. If approved, yes, sir?
Go ahead, sorry.
If approved, based on the comments made by the engineers with regards to lighting. We did talk about a sidewalk put on the other side of the building, I guess that would be the north side, or the side, I guess, where the utility entrance is, and the landscaping move to provide for that, if that's something that you would want to consider. And the, I think that was the only other change that we had discussed, is that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any conversation regarding that, the sidewalk, that's something that we should?
So your options, Mr. Chairman, if I, your options are to leave it as is, where you'd have to come back, walk around. The second option is to cross the maintenance driveway, move the landscaping over a bit, or the third option, perhaps, is to provide a second sidewalk on the south side of the building, albeit somewhat close to the other sidewalk, but a little bit shorter. So you basically have three options. Leave it as is, put a sidewalk on the north side, or put a sidewalk on the south side.
Right. Thank you. What say ye, so? In my opinion, what Mr. Maskey said, quite honestly, that the sidewalk on that other side makes sense, because especially if there's people parking in that parking lot on the north side, that they would...
Next to Building Four.
Next to Building Four, that would be the, the way they'd want to approach that building, instead of walking completely around it. Plus, it doesn't overbear the other side, which has an existing sidewalk already. So I would think that that would be a good addendum to that, that building. So I would make a motion with, with that change and the lighting done per Mr. White's approval.
With, with the understanding, we just want to underline it again, that any repurposing of the vacated space, if it's in any way outside of the, or the acceptable use or ordinary use of the residential building, would have to come back to the board for either a site plan amendment and/or a variance, just so that's understood.
Correct.
I just want to confirm that there's, the sidewalk proposal, any of those three options are workable?
Yeah, they said they would, they would do that. If we, if we put that as a condition of approval.
Okay.
So...
Mr. Chairman, I'll move your motion.
Thank you. So we'll take a roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestad?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Benjamin Delcor?
Yes.
Benjamin Sarachi?
Yes.
Chairman LaPine?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you much.
Have a good evening.
You, too. Correspondence in your packets, there was really nothing there, and we have a next meeting scheduled for the eighth, a regular meeting still?
There's no agenda for the February eighth meeting, so the board may consider canceling that meeting, but the business meeting on February twenty-second is scheduled for the
Capital Plan?
Presentation by the Capital Planning Committee.
An ordinance review.
For the business meeting? Okay. So, so we don't need, as of right now, we don't need the eighth, February eighth meeting? So we will take a motion to cancel the February eighth meeting?
Move to cancel the eighth?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Strike the eighth. The next meeting is the February twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, Business Meeting for Capital Planning Presentation. We would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.